Good morning. It's December 1st, 2020, 12:02, and I hereby call the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order. And I would ask that anybody in person would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to your public or which is standing nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you, everybody. We are holding this meeting via Zoom as we've been doing the last several months, and that is because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to social distance. I would entertain a motion for adoption of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
An aye. Agenda is adopted. Next, updates on COVID-19. Do staff have any updates for us today? Hearing none. Supervisor Hiddens, have you seen any recent numbers?
If things are correct, it looks like from yesterday, statewide, there's an increase of 1,906 cases, 24 deaths. Story County, 57 new cases, and our total deaths are 22. So we had a few additional deaths over the weekend, the one weekend.
I just saw something in the register this morning that cases had gone up so much more in November over October, and we're probably lagging on some test results. So it'd be nice to say, see, the numbers are going down, but we need to see a little bit more. And they also say that the death numbers lag the infections, so.
Right. They're also saying that there are 102,62 care facilities in the state reporting outbreaks.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for that information. Next, we'll go to public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If any members of the public have any comments to make on topics on the agenda, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or unmute yourself by using the stern eye on your phone. Do you see anybody laying? I'm not sure that I do. Okay, sitting here, none, I will close public comment number one. We'll go on to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. In other words, emergency kind of things are urgent. Do we have any? Hearing none, we'll go on to agency reports. Central Iowa RSVP, annual report. Do we have somebody from RSVP on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me okay? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Aye. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Yeah. Okay, okay, great. All right, thank you. Yeah, so I'm with Central Iowa RSVP, and I, I think that you got a copy of our annual report from last fiscal year. And we provide three services in Story County. Our core service, of course, is volunteer management for adults that are 55 and older. We also contract with the emergency management to provide services in the disaster area in coordinating both a volunteer reception center, also assisting with phone bank. That's also transitioned over to working with Story County Sheriff's Office and having volunteers that are, that are trained to staff a tip hotline in the event of a missing person or an abducted child. And then we also have transportation program that we manage. It is a little bit limited right now because of COVID, but it is operating. And our primary goal is to make sure that folks that are no longer able to drive can get to medical appointments and other essential services. So those are our three core services. I know our annual report kind of outlined some of the outcomes or outputs of what we've been doing. Of course, like a lot of nonprofits, our organization also got derailed a little bit back in March when a good percentage of our volunteer activities just had to stop. We are still now doing some projects in the schools, including our pen pal program. We're fortunate that that's a project that we're able to do where the volunteers don't have to go into the schools. And then we also tried to find creative ways that we could engage our volunteers in addressing the needs that were emerging as a result of COVID-19. And hopefully you got to see some of that in the report that I sent to Michelle. We had volunteers that made a lot of masks. Some of our pen pals that were displaced, we were able to redirect them to writing to isolated residents of the care facilities and the Iowa Veterans Home. And so that, that's continued. And then we've also continued to have volunteers very active, working in the food pantries and with Food at First and, and some of those organizations that their services have continued. A couple of new things that we, that I wanted to let you know about, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. One is that we currently, well, we have been working with public health for quite a while through our disaster services. So we have volunteers that are pre-trained to staff the non-medical positions that are needed in a pod, which is a point of dispersment, so it'd be like a flu shot clinic. We've had a couple of Zoom meetings recently with public health to talk about ways that our volunteers are going to be able to get engaged once a vaccine is available for COVID. And our volunteers are going to be doing a lot of the data entry for that, because once the shots are given, the vaccines are given, it has to be put into a system called IRIS within 24 hours. So our volunteers are going to be busy doing that. They're also going to be part of what are called strike teams to fill the non-medical positions that will go out to designated groups that will be receiving the vaccine, and they'll be assisting with that as well. Eventually, when there are public pods open, our volunteers will be staffing the, the non-medical positions that are needed for that. So we're gearing up for that. And another new partnership that we hopefully will be kicking off right up to the first of the year is with Heartland Senior Services. And one of the things that we realized that was sort of came out of, of COVID, although I think it's going to be a need, that it's probably been there and will continue, but we are going to partner with Heartland to do a grocery delivery service. We're really going to focus mostly, I shouldn't say mostly, not exclusively, on the rural communities where folks don't have access to a grocery store necessarily in their community, but even in the communities where there is a grocery store, there are a lot of residents that are unable to get out and get their own groceries. So we are working with the grocery stores, and that's kind of some of the details that we're ironing out right now. And Heartland will be vetting the clients that will be utilizing this service, and then we will be vetting the, the volunteers that will be doing the delivery. I think fortunately, we're going to be able to do, utilize a lot of our drivers, our existing driver pool for our transportation program that are going to be excited about being able to do this. So I don't have all the details right now, but there will be more coming later, and I'll be glad to kind of keep you updated on that. But we, I know that Heartland is really wanting to focus on their home-delivered meal recipients first, because they've already, they're already trying to remain living independently and are somewhat isolated. And if they need home-delivered meals, we're going to kind of start with that pool for the delivery service, and then we're going to kind of see how that goes. So those are a couple of new projects that are on the horizon for us right now and shortly after the first year. And otherwise, we're just plugging away and, and doing everything that we can to try to address the needs that are out in the community with some limitations, obviously, because of COVID. So I would be happy to address any questions. I, I do want to thank you very much for letting me come today and to present about RSVP. I really appreciate it. And of course, we really appreciate all the support that we get from the Board of Supervisors and the county. You know, obviously, the funding, but just the support that we get in general, we really appreciate. So if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Karen, for joining us via Zoom today. And let's see if any of the supervisors, I have a comment, but I'll let the others go first with questions.
Okay, Linda, this is Supervisor Hiddens.
Yes.
I just had one question for you. I appreciated your report. It was very detailed. You were talking about the transportation, and I certainly understand transportation has been reduced or challenging during COVID times, and that you're continuing to try to make sure people get some medical appointment. Have you seen a decline in that, or have you been able to maintain those individuals with their, you know, is it kind of similar to last year's numbers? I know it's fluid, because it kind of depends. Not everybody's going to have the same medical issue each year and stuff, but it stayed pretty consistent, would you say, or within your range?
I, I would say we're operating at about, I want to say, probably 60% capacity. The requests have dropped just because I think, well, initially, we did stop our transportation service March 26th, and then we, we worked through some things with our advisory council and, and with our staff to try to figure out how we might be able to safely provide the service again, because our clients were really struggling. And so we did start back up June 1st. I, I think because a lot of the appointments or medical appointments that weren't absolutely what they consider essential were canceled or not being set up. So we definitely saw a drop in the request for trips to medical appointments. They're picking back up again a little bit, I would say. We also, of course, had maybe probably 40% to 50% of our drivers that felt comfortable coming back. We had a lot of restrictions that we put in place. One of the things that we did was we requested that the client sit in the backseat on the passenger side. Obviously, masks are required, and, you know, if they have any kind of symptoms at all of COVID, we don't want them to be transported by one of our volunteers. But so far since June, it's gone very well, but it has been limited. The other thing that we did initially was we restricted it to only in-county trips. We really wanted to limit the amount of time that our volunteers were spending in, in a closer proximity with those individuals and, and them with the driver as well. We have since had a couple of trips that we have done that were specialists that our clients really needed to get to in Des Moines, but we're really limiting that. So yeah, there's definitely been a drop, though. I'm sorry, that was a long answer, but.
Thank you.
You bet.
Supervisor Olson, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thanks for, again, for continuing to provide all these services. I would like to just make note, it sounded like it was a great new plan. You guys are coming up with Heartland about maybe getting groceries out there. I don't know if somebody from either your organization or Heartland has checked in, probably with Annika Mondell at United Way. She coordinates the hunger collaboration.
Yes.
And, and Mica and Salvation Army are trying to work with the Kiwanis in Ames, right now, Town and Country, but they're trying to get delivery of food pantry packages out. So just to let you know about that, so if you can double up on, you know, resources or whatever, some of those clients probably you're delivering to might also have need of supplemental from the food pantries.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Thank you, Loris. And I do know that Nancy Carroll has been in contact with Jean Cressy about this.
Okay.
You know, hopefully she's passed that on to Annika, but yes, that, and, and I think that would be something that if they're struggling to find volunteers to do that, you know, we could probably find them that would be willing to do that as well. So yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Sure. Right. So have a safe winter and yeah.
You. Fingers crossed, right? Keep the snow. Yeah.
Let me add my thanks on the, the grocery delivery service idea, and particularly to the rural areas, because I think they do get, older folks who are living in the rural areas get extremely isolated, have fewer options. They don't have a lot of public transportation. So I think that you're really looking at a population there that needs that help. So thank you so much for doing that and everything else that you're doing.
You're welcome. We're, we're excited about that grocery delivery service. I think it's going to be a lot of fun to do too and meet a need. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll mute.
We'll go on to item 10, consideration of minutes. And we do have minutes from the 11/18, but I'm not finding any from the 24. And I don't know that everybody's had time to look at the ones for the 18th. It was the septic ordinance meeting. Why don't we just let them go till next week? I didn't get them an email. I just found them in here now.
No, that's because they were in the folder on credit.
Okay, well. Yeah, well, we didn't all get to them, so. And I know that Supervisor Olson wasn't here very long yesterday, so we'll just wait and do both of them next week then, if that's okay. Okay, um, consideration of personnel actions. I did not see any listed. So we don't have anything there. Consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled off the consent agenda?
No.
I don't have any.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. Items is listed.
So moved.
Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda approved. Then we'll go on to public hearing items. Discussion and consideration of resetting the third consideration of proposal ordinance number 287. Margaret James, are you on? Yes. Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning. So I am prepared to present for the third hearing today or next week. Either way, I am prepared.
This is Supervisor Olson. So I've only briefed, we've only been briefed that you had looked at, you had looked at possible changes you were thinking about making. Okay, I feel we've published, we have put this out to the public, we've approved it twice, and that the best course of action, I believe personally, is for us, let's go ahead, let's do third reading, let's put it into force in January, and you are going to, I believe, starting in January, as people start to contact you, like saying, hey, I got pumped a year ago, here's my certificate, what am I doing next? You know, all of those, okay. And that any of the modifications I believe that you are thinking about might be better fleshed out, and you might have better idea if the ordinance needs fine tuning a few months from then. So that's.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Great.
Supervisor Hiddens, do you have anything else to add?
No, I, you know, I would prefer that there was more clarity within it and the concerns addressed now versus later would be just my, my suggestion on it.
Okay.
Entertain a motion?
Well, excuse me. Are you moving to have the hearing or, or for, for the septic thing? Because I do have a few things to add if we're having a hearing today.
I was going to move for a hearing. Just, I, I will move that we have the hearing today.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda. It says discussion and consideration of resetting the proposed ordinance to December 8th. And a possible addition item for decision pulls the third hearing item already posted and postponed it for the following Tuesday.
And I don't understand what that means.
So.
Yeah, I don't either.
So does that mean we can't, I mean, that you can't do it, because it looks like your discussion and consideration is for it to be next.
Yeah.
Next week.
Except we, consideration can go either way, right? Okay, you put it on there, but consideration could go either way. So I made a motion that let's go ahead and do it.
Here's my, may I, here's my concern. If we.
Let's, whether I.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? The motion dies for lack of a second. Let's do some further discussion. It says, I think we have an agenda from, this says discussion and consideration of resetting the third consideration. It does not have the third consideration in its own on the agenda. So if we say we're not going to reset it, we actually have nothing. I think we only have one option with the way this agenda item is, which is to reset it for next week. I, I don't like that, but I, I looked at it and dramatically, I don't see that we have an option.
Yeah, I, I hear what you and Lisa Supervisor Hiddens are saying about the way it's worded. I.
Consideration of the ordinance, of their, on their consideration, then we could do that, but we don't have it.
Yeah. It's unfortunate. It was put on this way and, okay, I got you.
At the end of the world, because we have next week.
Right.
So let's do this. I would entertain a motion to reset the third consideration of proposed ordinance number 287 to December 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Also moved.
So moved, I'll second.
Okay, moved by Olson, second by Hiddens. Further discussion. Margaret, let me just give you a second here, because we're going to do this next week. That's all we can do on the agenda. Are you still going? Okay.
That is just fine. That's, that's great. I'm fine with that. I, I will be there next week. Yep.
So I would like to clarify, this will be the ordinance that has been published, correct?
Correct. With, there's a few extra periods and lines like that, they can be removed, correct?
Scrivener's error. Scrivener corrections only.
Okay, yes, yes, correct, correct.
Anything else? Okay, then we will vote on the motion to reset the third consideration for next week. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we have additional items. Consideration of request for proposals for space needs assessment for Story County, Iowa. And Jovi, you may not be with us today.
Nope, I'm here. I'm on. Good morning. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay. Morning, Board. Yeah, this is a, look at Lisa, request for proposals to get a consultant to perform a space needs assessment. This is a budgeted project for this fiscal year, and Leanne helped, helped me greatly putting this thing together. And I think we're, we're at the point, we're ready to release it if the Board's okay with it.
I have a couple of questions. Do the other supervisors want to go first, though? Okay. I was just told to go ahead. And I, I'm sorry, I ran out of time because I was working on a drainage district issue this morning. I did not, I skimmed through this. Is there anything in here that would lead a consultant to think about telework and what office space needs might be different if the county engages in more telework with its employees?
It does not have anything specifically called out about telework. But I'm sure that, I mean, we tried to cover most of our bases, you know, and I could be wrong in this, but I feel that once we, the Board were to pick a potential consultant, we should be able to add that to the, the scope of what we want to take into consideration.
Just for clarification, can you just clarify what you're seeking, Linda? Do you want?
What I'm seeking is, we've learned a lot in the last nine months. We've had people, you know, doing telework. We kind of backed into it because of COVID. We didn't have a real plan set up. We just said, we got to do this. And I'm just wondering, in terms of office space needs, if it might look a little different if we had specifically to, for the consultant to, when they're going around looking at places, to ask about teleworking, both what's going on now, has that reduced your needs for space, and what might you envision in the future? Because it's expensive to build additional office space. And just the question of, do we need it? Where do we need it? To just get really specific about that and really challenge people to think about what the workplace of the future is going to look like. Is that, is that helpful? Maybe not.
It can be done.
It can be done within the scope of that. Okay. I would just encourage you to really, to really work with a consultant on that.
This is.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a prop, go, oh, sorry, go ahead, Loris.
I was just going to say, this, to add on to, to Linda, you know, comments about that, is where I think about that, as they're thinking about teleworking remotely, is making sure IT is, they work with IT to discover what might we need to do to boost up capabilities or for people to do the VPNs as opposed to just accessing remotely. And, you know, what kind of modifications might be needed to the building, you know, to be able to, or to the buildings to be able to do that. So that's just, yeah, I, I like Linda's idea about that, once they go ahead and, and get a contract awarded.
Okay. Thank you. Jovi, anything else?
No, and I don't, I think we can, you know, make sure we include those specifics when we get to that consultant picking phase. It could even be some of the questions we could ask them. Once we, we receive their RFPs back, we can ask if they've got specific, you know, experience in those areas.
I like that, because that'll kind of give them a heads up that that's something we're interested in, if it's in the questions. I think that's a good idea.
I like what Loris pointed out. We need to make sure we include if it packs on our IT infrastructure it could potentially have.
Okay, anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval for the RFP for space needs assessment for Story County government.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you, Jovi.
Beth, thank you.
Now we'll go on to department reports. IRBM report has been submitted. Do we have anybody on the call?
Hello, hello, hello. Can you hear me?
You're a little quiet there.
Speak up.
I can yell.
That's good.
Can you hear me now?
Joe?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, it's been a while, Board, and I think it's been almost February. So this really isn't a quarterly report. It's more like, you know, an eight-month report. And I was in a mood to type the other day when I put together this, this report of mine, but I, my goal is to go through it quickly and just highlight some things. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing I put in there was, you know, staffing's been a little challenging because of the situation that we're in and trying to get some of the, you know, extra help or what we call seasonal help in from university or, or wherever. or what we call seasonal help in from university or, or wherever, uh, you know, they're, they're having issues too, and, you know, some of these young people, you know, they're off right now from Iowa State, I think some of them have gone back home, uh, maybe they didn't, you know, re-up their, their rental agreement, but we, we did have a full staff going, but we did lose one person. Uh, but currently, we still, you know, Tyler and I are going strong, and we have Allison about 30 hours a week, and then we have another person named Nolan who's in full ti, or, you know, 40 hours a week, so I guess the term is we're cooking with gas, uh, they're out hydroseeding today in the chilly weather, but, um, at least the sun's shining. So, uh, moving on, I just, we'd update on the, on the contract spring, I assume, uh, and this, this was the outfit that we, that we budgeted for that came down from Algonah, Iowa, spring brush that is, you know, 15 feet or less. I didn't hear any feedback from the Board of Supervisors, any, any of the public that had concerns, unless you didn't tell me about it, but I think you would have, um, so, uh, things went well, uh, we, actually, we had calls coming in about what, you know, what are they using, and, and the, and the good job they did, and as you read along, and the people out there that might be listening, uh, we covered the, the four townships in the bottom of Story County, and then we, uh, looped back up to Lafayette Township, which is the northwestern township of Story County, and we got those knocked out, so we're pretty happy with that. Um, the one thing I want to add, you know, for those listening, is, you know, not every mile's covered, so we may get a call in, like, hey, you know, they didn't control brush on this mile, well, that mile may have had some, uh, you know, be adjacent to some beehives or some sensitive crops, and we just marked that off the list, so we don't get in any trouble and, and up, you know, upset anybody, so there are some miles out there that didn't get done. Uh, moving on anyway to the seed harvest, it went well this year, the, uh, Mike's staff, uh, the other conservation people, we all worked together, and we got it done in four days, and that's pretty impressive, and, um, so you can read there, 230 pounds worth of seed that I estimated, uh, we did, we did send in our seed samples for the first time to a lab in Wisconsin, so they were able to do a purity test, which tells us what we have in there. And then beyond that, you do a TZ test, uh, which is basically figuring out whether the seed ha, is, uh, has a chance to grow, not that it will grow, but it has a chance, we haven't had those results back yet, um, but that's exciting, and so we'll use this seed to supplement other seedings that we do, whether it's in roadsides, or whether it's, uh, on some of the other lands that we have at Hickory Grove, you know, any of the other spots that we have coming up, so, um, and then Tyler did host three public, Tyler and Erica, uh, we had three public seed harvests, uh, which, you know, we're out there in the open, and everybody followed the rules, so. Moving on down to prescribed fire, uh, Board, this was the first fall in many falls that we've been able to do a little burning, and so, uh, we did about 15 acres, which is nice. Um, and along with that, we're, currently, we're doing some seeding, um, the road department, uh, as you know, had a little glitch going on called Dratio, they had a lot of work to do cleaning up brush, that kept them from doing a lot of road maintenance, or not maintenance, but digging out areas that, that were on track to be done, but now they're done with that, uh, Dratio pickup for the most part, um, and they're out doing their work, so we're catching up with those guys doing some planting, um, and we will be, uh, you know, until we catch up, as long as we can park the hydroseeder in the heated shop overnight, we're okay. Um, so. Moving on down to private lands, it's, I think it's worth letting the Board know that this, the Conservation Reserve Program is, uh, is going strong, and, you know, we're not in charge of, of, uh, signing people up, they go into the Natural Resource Conservation Service to do that, and when they do, then I get a call, or the county gets a call on our, our equipment availability, and we have about 30 projects on the Board, uh, some are 80 acres or bigger, and hopefully, we can get some of that done this fall, and the rest will do in the spring, but that's good news, it's good news for Story County. Um, moving on down to drainage ditch work, we will be moving equipment Thursday up to, uh, Hamilton Story 1, northwest of Story City to get some trees out of there, and then we will head on down to Grant 13, uh, which is along the interstate, on the east side of the interstate, to finish up what we didn't get done last winter, and as you read on down the list, Harden Story 3, New Albany 75, we have a lot of, uh, brush piles that we need to take care of. And what I mean by taking care of, uh, we just need to burn them up, so, um, there is some contract work going on, uh. Especially in Boone Story 3, um, or, well, Warren 11 has a lot of beaver dams, um, I like that little, that little critter, but he does do some things in the drainage ditches, which backwater up and will blow out tiles in the farmer's field, so with the low water situation in Story County, um, the beavers have moved into a lot of our drainage districts and have caused some significant trouble for us, so, let's see. Moving on down to hydroseeder truck, uh, so the 2000 and, or the 1996 hydroseeder truck that we adopted 10 or 15 years ago, we were actually able to, uh, put that on a newer truck in 1996, and we, that's what we're using now, that, the old truck will go to the DOT auction, I think, in March, um, so that's nice, we have, you know, a newer truck under the hydroseeder, um, I would entertain that you, uh, guys, if you're out and about, um, please stop by our new shop, we have a shop addition that, uh, was built, and we poured some concrete not too long ago before it got too cold, so we have a pretty, uh, you know, it's a 40 by 40 out there, and the, the, the original building's 40 by 40, so now we have a lot of dance floor room, and, um, it's, uh, really helps to park our equipment inside and get it out of the weather, so, um, some budgeting that we, uh, you know, that was budgeted for 20, FY 2021, we're going to get a new cedar, a drop cedar to replace a 1996 drill that will go on the DOT auction next spring, um, Tyler already ordered the, the act, the tandem axle trailer that was budgeted for, so we could haul our little tractor around, and we have a herbicide storage cage that's in place in the new building addition, which is nice, because now we, uh, are up to snuff as far as, you know, a, a, a place to store our herbicide that's well-lit, well-ventilated, you can lock it, uh, you could placard it, and, um, you know, it's, it's just, we're, we're where we need to be with that, so. Looking ahead, well, we're going to be cutting trees in drainage districts and seeding until it gets too cold, um, other than that, equipment maintenance, um, I think I did put on here, uh, utility people came by the other day, I, I had asked for some, I knew, I assumed there would be some utility poles out there that were damaged, uh, when the storm hit, and lo and behold, uh, we did get five 45-foot nice utility poles delivered out at, out at our shop, which I can cut in half, and then get them like along the Prairie Rail Trail or other areas that the conservation, uh, that we agree on, and we can put our kestrel boxes on those, and someday, maybe I'll bring in for, when we can all meet together, I'll, I'll show you some pictures of the American kestrel, but it's that little hawk that you see in roadsides that kind of sits there and hovers and looks really cool, so, um, and, and they're nesting, so they're cavity nesters, and this is a part of the talk where I, you know, always try to do show and tell, and so there's not a lot of cavity nesting areas for falcons anymore along roadsides, because why, well, we have to cut the trees down if they're dead, because dead trees don't do very well falling on cars, so, uh, there aren't a lot of dead trees in the roadside, um, so when we put these boxes up, believe it or not, within, if you put them up in March, they're, they're 100% used, sometimes are used twice in the same year, so, um, it's nice to help out that little falcon. The rest of the talk, um, I just threw together some field operation comparisons by fiscal year. You know, the first thing is the work order's completed, it's way up, that is because we do a little better job keeping track of, of the work order system, you know, we're about three years into it, so we're at 101, and the other thing that helps is this little tablet that I'm talking on, uh, that keeps us organized, um. Everything else is kind of self-explanatory, you can look through there if you have any questions, it's just a three-year comparison, um, it has a lot to do with weather, um, and conditions and things like that, so, huh, I think I stormed through this pretty quick, um. I'll stop and ask, hey, are there any questions?
Supervisors, you have questions?
I don't have questions, I just want to say thanks for all your work, and thanks for the detailed reports, and I will definitely have to make, uh, my can stop out and see the new addition.
Please do, um, yeah, I have a phone number, it's, uh, I think you all have it, so just call us ahead of time so we can clean up a little bit and do the dishes.
Supervisor Olson, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, uh, I want to congratulate you, I see in the Looking Ahead section that you're going to be president of, um, uh, you'll have to tell us exactly what a firm is.
Uh, that's the Association for Integrated Roadside Vegetation Managers, so, and I'm president now, so, um, yeah, that happened in February, I believe, or early March, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and to Tyler too, for, you know, him and his service and reaching out and participating in, uh, industry organizations, so, and then I'm going to say that, um, since this will be the last presentation, that I'll, I'll be sitting here, uh, listening to you, uh, at least as a board member, so thank you, Joe, because I have learned so much about vegetation, weeds, um, you know, management of our resources from you and from Tyler, and so thank you very much, um, and I wish you much success and, and continued success in the future.
Well, thank you, Loris, and I'm sure we'll be seeing each other around somewhere.
Somewhere, okay, thanks.
All right.
And Joe, I, um, would be remiss if I didn't mention that Conservation just received the 2020 Wildlife Habitat Improvement Award, we're number one in the larger counties, and knowing all the work that you and your staff do, I know that you've got a lot to do with that.
Yeah, that's exciting, uh, that's, that's a nice award to get, thank you very much, and obviously, you'll have to, when you see Mike hit his staff up too, but we all work together to get that, we really, we really ramped that up.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's, that's just excellent to see, so, okay, and I look forward to in-person meetings again sometime, when you can drag in some weeds and ask us if we know what they are, I miss that.
Yep, me too, all right, cheers, thanks.
You have a good one, bye-bye. Okay, then we will head on, other reports, we have non-upcoming agenda items, obviously, next week, we'll have the third reading on the ordinance for the septic, uh, are there any other agenda items for next week that we might not, that we might need to know here and make sure they get on the agenda?
I don't have this time.
Okay, Supervisor Olson, do you have anything?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. There might be one thing, uh, we have something that I gave to Ethan yesterday, it's regarding the, um. It's regarding the opioid, um, lawsuit.
Oh.
Lawsuit, and, um, ISAC has done some work on that and sent us something, but I want Ethan to look at it before I put it on the agenda, it's a way that we can get into the legal representation on that issue now, so I'll, uh, I'll make sure to follow up on that one. Um. Public forum number two is comments, for comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the Board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of the open meeting flaw, but may do so in the future, so I will open public forum number two, and if anybody has anything that they would like to say, uh, please raise your hand using the Zoom function, or use star nine on your phone. I'm not seeing anybody or hearing anybody, Leanne, okay, I will close the public forum number two, we'll go on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors, Supervisor Olson, do you want to start us out?
Okay, um, so, uh, I'm, uh, voluntarily self-isolating this week, uh, but I'm getting the test, uh, to verify, I did go out of state, uh, over the holidays, so I just wanted to make, uh, make sure that everybody's safe, after being reminded about what a good practice it was sometimes to work from home, so, uh, I will be at the CCMT meeting tomorrow via Zoom, okay, and, uh, my other meetings for the week are HERDA and, uh, Community and Family Resources, there's a jurisdictional meeting, and there's an AEDC Exec Committee meeting, all of those will be by Zoom, um, everyone knows where to find me, right, to call or just, uh, Zoom in, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Headens.
Yep, so I have this afternoon, I have the District One Supervisors meeting on my calendar, and then the Board of Health is meeting today at 2, I have CCMT also on my calendar for Wednesday, uh, and then Monday, I do have a subcommittee for Boost, uh, Monday morning at 11:00.
Okay, sounds like I've got some similar, similar things, the ISAC District 1, I'm going to sit in the Board of Health session as well, I think, and, um, CCMT, also Story County College Access Network tomorrow, it looks like, and that's, that seems to be about it, there was another meeting, I think I have a couple other meetings that I've got invitations on, but there's always meetings, and then we're going to be doing, uh, interviews for Planning and Development Director later this week and next week as well. Sorry, is there anything else? If not, identity and motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye, we're adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.